George Street application, majestic investing group. If anybody's here for that application, stop being heard tonight. Okay, City of New Brunswick zoning board meeting for August 26, 2024. Roll call then.
Okay, Liti Mavias.
Here.
Derek Camaro. Jeanette Torres. Yahira Torres. Barry Sherman. Carla Castaneda.
Here.
Michael Belvin.
Here.
Kristen Rich.
Here.
Rafael Menzenares. Mike Toblin.
Yeah.
John Zimmerman. Here we have six voting members present tonight.
Okay. I'll look it up.
Please advise if the notice requirement to the Old Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied at the annual notice to be efficient notice of the time, place, and conduct of all public meetings of the zoning board of adjustment that the city of New Brunswick has been called the city clerk replaced in appropriate places in the lobby of City Hall, 78 Barrett Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transferred official newspapers to City of New Brunswick, including the Home and Shuriken Star Letter.
To the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do, we have two resolutions. We have 149 Sedam Street and Region 9 CHM 3 LLC, which was 45 Runcsen Avenue. Begin with 149 Sedam Street. Eligible voting members who are present today are John Zimmerman, Mike Toblin, Kristen Rich, and Mike Belvin.
Motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Second.
Mike Belvin?
Yes.
Kristen Rich?
Yes.
Mike Toblin?
Yes.
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 Next up, we have the Region 9 CHM 3 LLC, AKA the 45 Runcsen Avenue application, and we have the same four eligible voting members.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Mike Toblin?
Yes.
Kristen Rich?
Yes.
Mike Toblin?
Yes.
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 Also, not only that, but if you notice that we have May and April minutes. Pretty quick, so.
You can approve those?
Yes, we do, so going to April minutes, so it's for April 22. The eligible voting members that are present are John Zimmerman, Mike Toblin, Kristen Rich, Michael Belvin, and Liti Mavias.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks. Okay.
Second.
Liti Mavias?
Yes.
Okay. Mike Belvin?
Yes.
Kristen Rich?
Yes.
Mike Toblin?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, next up, we have the May 28 minutes, and we have John Zimmerman, Mike Toblin, Kristen Rich, Michael Belvin, and Liti Mavias again as eligible voting members for the minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Liti Mavias?
Yes.
Mike Belvin?
Yes.
Kristen Rich?
Yes.
Mike Toblin?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Okay. That's okay.
Our first public hearing is Livingston Holdings LLC, 345 Livingston Avenue, Block 300, Lot 1, ZB 2023-15. It's a bulk variance application to construct a three-story building with first floor commercial and retail, with the second and third floors residential. James F. Clarkin, escort.
Good evening, Chairman Zimmerman, Board members, professional staff, attorney James Clarkin at the firm of Clarkin and Viola for the applicant. Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, the designation of the applicant on, of the application on the agenda is an error. It is not a mixed-use building. It is not a three-story building. We thought we had it corrected, but apparently the word didn't get through. It's a four-story building, all residential, with 17 units. There is no commercial or retail on the first floor.
Mr. Chairman, we have an older agenda.
Do you guys have time for correction here? Okay. We placed it on the website. A four-story residential building.
I printed it off their website.
No problem. Just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, I printed it off the website.
That's okay. All right.
Look, why did you print it out? Updated it.
I'm sure it doesn't matter.
No, it's the same. Updated it last week, so just concerned.
Trying to be a little ahead of the game, but yeah.
All right. It's an application to, not to demolish an existing old Victorian structure that was last used before it was vacant as medical on the first floor and residential on the upper floors. It's at the corner of Livingston Avenue and Fulton Street. It will be four stories, it'll be 17 units, there'll be 18 enclosed parking spaces at the ground level. The application would continue a pattern of private redevelopment along the Livingston Avenue corridor and replace an approximate 85, at least 85-year-old structure and create some new housing stock for the city. Application is similar in a number of ways to an application this board approved the last year at 200 Livingston Avenue. We have communicated with the planning staff on a number of occasions to both fine-tune this application and to provide the city with the type of architectural look that it was seeking for the Livingston Avenue corridor. The architectural elevations are our fourth iteration, and we hope that you think that we have finally nailed it. The rendition that we have here, the rendering, is accurate, both in terms of building materials as well as the color palette. Unfortunately, Mr. Johnson is not available this evening. He turned ill this afternoon, and so he will not be available, but we wanted to make sure we had the rendering for you to understand what it is that you're being asked to approve. Thirty-five parking stalls are required, and with four electric charging station credits, all right, we are 22 spaces to the credit. Eighteen provided and four for the EV stations. Based upon this applicant's prior extensive knowledge of residential in the city of New Brunswick, 18 spaces from an operational perspective will be more than sufficient. The applicant will, of course, make the required monetary contribution for the shortage of the required spaces. We always recognize that each case is judged individually on its own merits. However, reference to the 200 Livingston case, I think, is instructive when reviewing this particular application. At 200 Livingston, you had a four-story, 28-unit building, and that was approved with an FAR of 1.7121. The parking deficiency was 30 spaces. While I recognize this was a larger lot, the comparative scope of relief for this application is less than it was for 200 Livingston. I've showed you the attractive front facade that we have. We think that it's similar to what the city thought it wanted along this corridor as we redeveloped it. We are now down to two witnesses. The first will be Ron Sadowski, who is our engineer. He will take you through all of the improvements that are being proposed. He will be followed by our planner, who will justify the use variants, the FAR, the parking variants, and the bulk variances. If there are any questions with regard to floor plans that I know you all have, I'm going to defer that to Mr. Garcia. But I will tell you that, as I said, the building materials and color palette are there, and we would ask that to be introduced, at least for identification, as Exhibit A1. The units range in area from 755 square feet to 1121 square feet, and I know that Mr. Bignell want a clarification as to the height of the building, and it does not exceed 40 feet, it is right at it. So unless there's any threshold questions, I'll move to the first witness, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, before you start, does any member or professional have any conflict with this? Matt, everybody good? Okay.
All right, report Ron Sadowski.
Can you please state your name, explain your last name for the record?
Ronald J. Sadowski, S-A-D-O-W-S-K-I.
Do you swear on this document to the truth?
I do.
Mr. Sadowski, can you give the board the benefit of your expertise and education, please?
Yes, I'm a 1988 graduate from the New Jersey Institute of Technology, where I received a bachelor of engineering, a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. I received my New Jersey Professional Engineers license in 1994. Been practicing 30 years as a professional engineer, and I've, I've testified before this board on numerous occasions.
And were your credentials always accepted?
Yes.
Have they changed in any way negatively since you were last accepted?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I'd offer them up as an expert in the field of engineering. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron, did you prepare the engineering drawings that accompanied this application?
I did. Before you, should I mark this A1?
I'm going to ask Dan, can you mark it?
Yeah, mark it A1. I have it.
I'll put that behind. What I have on the easel here is a color rendering of the landscaping plan as part of the site plan application. We can mark this as A2, if you'd like.
Is that part of the plans that we submitted already?
Yes, correct.
But it's a colored version.
All right, mark it.
A2, please.
And this shows the location of the subject property?
That is correct.
Corner lot?
Yes.
Corners of?
Full.
Okay. Size of the lot?
12,600 square feet, 100 feet by 126 feet.
Okay. What are the surrounding land uses?
The Livingston Avenue corridor is a C3A, which is the office professional. Currently, there's a mixed residential, there's some commercial, there's a church on the opposite side of Fulton Street, and then further down, there is an apartment complex. And to the east and west are the R4 and R5A, which is a residential zone that's predominantly residential.
Where is the property today?
Currently, there is a commercial and retail structure on the first floor and second and third floor residential.
Formally commercial?
Formally, yes.
Currently vacant?
Vacant, yes.
Okay. Proposed to be demolished?
Correct.
Okay. Where is the applicant proposing its place?
The applicant is proposing a four-story apartment, residential apartment with 17 two-bedroom units with 18 covered parking spaces, along with some ancillary office, some interior utility rooms, trash collection areas, lobby, mailroom, et cetera.
Okay. We're going to demolish all of the improvements on the site?
That is correct.
Okay. Can you review the front yard setbacks for the board, please?
Yes, the front yard setback requirement on both Livingston and Fulton are 15 feet. What we're proposing on Livingston is 25 feet to pull the building away from the Livingston Avenue cartway. And on Fulton Street, we're proposing 5.5 feet to require variance.
Okay. Where's the driveway access?
The driveway access is along Fulton Street. Again, there's an entrance and an exit from Fulton.
And that's the sole access?
That's correct.
All righty, do we provide electric vehicle charging stations?
We do. Our current plan that's part of the cycling application shows six spaces, electric charging spaces. We're going to reduce that to four, because as the limit that we can get for a credit with parking is 10% of the parking requirement, which becomes four parking spaces. And we get one space credit for each EV vehicle, so four is the maximum. And plus, with 18 parking spaces, we felt that that would be too much of a ratio, too great a ratio, to have the electric vehicles, so we're going to reduce it to four.
All right. Do we have ADA accessibility for parking?
We do. We have a van accessible in these spaces, yes.
Okay. Are there bicycle racks?
There are.
And where would that be located?
The bicycle rack is located right next to the mailroom.
So it's indoors?
Correct, covered.
All right. Can you review lighting and landscaping, please?
Yes, there are building-mounted lights along the perimeter of the building, and we also have a proposed landscaping along the perimeter of the building as well. There's a concrete walkway that will also have low height, more like shrub plantings, and there are shade trees proposed along Fulton Street. There are two existing street trees along Livingston Avenue which are to remain. There are no existing trees on site that will be none removed as part of this application.
Trash will be cycled?
Yes, there's, it's enclosed as well. It's private pickup. The trash will be two times a week, and the cycling will be bi-weekly.
Is there an ancillary office that's part of this floor plan?
There is. It's in the, I want to say, southwest corner of the building.
And so that would be a rental office for this property?
Correct.
Not a general office?
Correct.
All right. Meter rooms?
Yes, they're within the building. The gas meters are mounted on the west wall of the building.
Can you address curving and sidewalk, please?
Yes, along Livingston and Fulton Street, we will be repairing curb that's in disrepair. And then also, as part of the application, we're rerouting or relocating, I should say, the access from Fulton Street to the property itself. Fencing?
Yes.
Fencing, yes, there's going to be a solid fence along the west and the north side of the property.
Have you had an opportunity to review the Bignell planning report dated June 15?
I have.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, as we customarily do, I'd like to move to paragraph nine, which is Mr. Bignell's planning review comments. They store at the bottom of page four. I'm going to ask this witness to address those that are engineering in nature, beginning with item F.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Are those reviews August 21st? Do you have that?
I don't have it. And I reached out to Todd, only to find out today that it's occupied. All right. So we'll pin it a little bit. All right, we can still... Let's go with E.
Okay.
The lobby package delivery area should be classified to Castaneda.
Yes, you're on. Okay. There is a separate room with access from the parking garage to, I want to say parking garage, but the parking area that has individual locked mailboxes for each of the units and the office, which is 18 total. So deliveries of mail or packages will be brought into that room that is not accessible to the delivery. The rest, the remainder, remaining building is not accessible to the delivery person.
All right, moving on to F, parking testimony to address the shortage of spaces. We'll have our planner deal with that. Certainly, the pilot payments, we understand, are required for outstanding spaces, and we would agree to waive the right on-street parking permits as Mr. Bignell requests. Can you move to item G about lighting details?
Yes, lighting details for the parking structure itself, because I want to call the ceiling of the parking structure will be provided.
All right, and H, you've now indicated that two additional shade trees will be integrated?
Yes, we'll add the trees as requested.
Okay. And the tree removal replacement calculations will be placed on revised plans?
Yes.
All right. Item N, can you talk about utility transformers, hot boxes?
Yes, there will be no transformers proposed as part of this. All of the electric will be brought in from pole-mounted transformers that exist.
All right. Moving on to the Department of Engineering memorandum dated August 18, have you reviewed that?
I have, yes.
All right. Are there any items in that report that the applicant cannot comply with?
No.
Are there any items that bear any further discussion or clarification?
No.
All righty, and we'll leave it to the engineer. I'm sure he may have a question or two.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes his direct testimony. He's available for questions by you, the board, or your experts.
Any member of the board or professionals have a question for this, please? Okay, seeing none.
Okay.
All right. We'll call James Clarkin.
Can you please state your name, explain your last name for the record?
Sure, James Clarkin IV CLARKIN.
Do you swear on this document to the truth?
I do.
Mr. Clarkin, has James applied, appeared before this board before?
I believe I've appeared before this board four times. I graduated from Blassey right across the street, licensed professional, professional planner, stayed in New Jersey for seven years now. I've also testified before other middle-sized county, I mean, a small boards, such as Edison Township of Scandaway, and I've always been accepted.
Have your credentials changed in any way negatively since you were last accepted by this board?
No.
I'll offer them up again, Mr. Chairman, please.
We'll accept them.
Thank you. Have you had an opportunity to review the application, the architectural and engineering drawings, and review the staff reports?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Have you also had an opportunity to inspect the property as well as the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes, I was able to do that as well.
What is on the quarter, this corner property map?
So right now, it's just a vacant two-and-a-half-story Victorian home that was used as medical office on the first floor and apartments above, 10 parking spaces, but as I said, it's currently vacant.
The site has access via driveway on Livingston currently?
That's right, and it circles around the building, exits onto Fulton currently.
Any other improvements on the property?
No, nothing.
How about the surrounding land uses?
So it's mainly residential in nature, specifically, especially on Fulton and the side streets. Livingston is more of a mix with residential, but also commercial. There's a church and some medical offices kind of mixed in on Livingston.
And what is your understanding of what the applicant proposes?
So we are going to demolish everything on the site that is there now, including the structure, and we're going to build a four-story, 17-unit apartment building with 18 enclosed parking spaces.
18.
Yeah.
Are you familiar with the city's zoning ordinance and its next plan?
I am.
What zone is the property located in?
So we are in your C3A commercial and professional office zone. Multifamily is not permitted in the zone, and most of the permitted users are commercial and medical in nature, so we are seeking use variance to thank for this board.
Can you take the board through what other variances the applicant needs in order to make this project a reality?
Sure, so we have three bulk variances. The front yard setback on Fulton Street, as mentioned by Ron, it's a requirement of 15 feet, and we are proposing five and a half feet. Then you have the rear yard setback, which is a requirement of 45 feet, where we're proposing 12 feet. And then the final bulk variance is for the building coverage. Your zone, C3A, calls for 40%, we're calling or proposing 58% roughly. On top of that, sorry, was there a question?
No.
Never mind.
Parking variance?
Yep, parking variance, thank you. 35 spaces required, but with the EVs, it's really a deficiency of 13 spaces. I'll go over that. And then we have the FAR variance requirement. I think your zone calls for .821, where we're proposing 1.8621. And then finally, there's a design standard for parking space width. We're requesting eight feet instead of the normal amount.
In terms of the front yard setback, would you say that complying with the setback along Livingston would be the preferable of the two as opposed to four?
Yes, definitely. Definitely from like a walkability nature and visual impact, I think it makes more sense.
All right. Let's start with the use variance. In your opinion, is this property particularly suitable for what the applicant proposes?
Yes, I believe it is particularly suitable for two main reasons. The first being the corner lot. Compared to the lots surrounded by it, it does have more space, so compared to the other lots. So this allows for additional area where we can fit more structure and parking spaces on the site. So I think that the corner lot is more particularly suitable when compared to the other lots. And then also, the corner lot has a high visual appeal, and I think that our proposed design will benefit the intersection, and the use will fit well into the fabric of the neighborhood, similar to that 200 Livingston Avenue application we recently mentioned. And then second is just its location on Livingston Avenue, as you know, it's a major thoroughfare, highly walkable street. It's got bike lanes, public transportation, transportation, and on-street parking, so I feel that a medium-density multifamily use is perfect for there, especially to add new housing stock for the city. It's such a vibrant, walkable city, really. And then I want to go further, I'm going to kind of dive into the parking variance. So you have on-street parking, not only on Livingston, but on the side streets, Fulton, and others. And when you combine that with other transportation options, this is the bus, Uber, and Lyft, will have the bike racks, so they can take advantage of the bike lanes to get downtown. There are rentable or even personal mini scooters that people have to get around. I think that reduces the need, or at least reduces the parking demand that this use will create. So we feel that 18 spaces is enough and can efficiently fit into our building footprint and cover the shortfall of 13 spaces. And then further, I'd like to add that a 2022 survey found that 20% of New Brunswick households don't own a car, and that 70% only one, own one or none. So I think when you combine that with all the public transportation options I just mentioned, then you add in work from home. I feel that the 18 spaces is sufficient, and it's really efficient use of our space, given the corner lot. And I don't think it'll be overpart, I think it'll be sufficiently parked. So I think that all that combined paves the way, in my opinion, for granting the parking variance.
Can the use variance here prove the negative criteria?
Yes, I believe it can. So the site's particular suitability serves the general welfare, providing a medium-density use on an appropriate corner lot and major thoroughfare. And like I said, an encouraged walkability. So in my opinion, the zoning plan and the master plan won't be substantially impaired, as similarly sized multifamily structures can be found along Livingston Avenue and in other parts of the city. And I feel that the character of the corridor may be modified, but not harmed in any way. So it's my professional opinion that the zoning plan and the master plan are not impaired at all, much less substantially.
How about addressing the FAR variance?
Right, so like I said, the corner lot is bigger, so it can accommodate the additional density, in my opinion. There are other examples of smaller lots accommodating medium density, and they have worked in the city without causing any issues to the neighborhood or substantial detriments to the neighborhood. And then in addition, the FAR relief is subsumed within the use variance.
Do you have an opinion whether any of the goals and objectives of New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law would be furthered if this application were granted?
Yes, after reviewing the law, I think purposes G and I apply here. So G is providing sufficient space in an appropriate location for multifamily use. I think it's furthered as we're adding additional housing stock on a corner lot that can accommodate this additional density. And then purpose I promotes a desirable visual environment through creative tech, development techniques, and good civic design, which I feel that our design is furthering.
Now let's turn our attention to the city's master plan, and would any of the goals and objectives of the master plan be furthered by granting this application?
Yes, it's my professional opinion, after reviewing the city's master plan, that two of our land use goals can be furthered by this application or granting the use variance of such. The first is you have a goal that states the provision of unique, attractive, and high-quality residential areas that serve existing and new residents with a wide range of housing and lifestyle choices. So although this is a commercial office zone, as I said, because of the surrounding uses, it really is a residential area. So I think that there are homes and apartments along Livingston Avenue, Fulton Street, and nearby streets, and that we are just adding to the housing stock here with a modern apartment choice, housing choices, as you say, that is unique and attractive. And then the second land use goal that I noticed, I think that is furthered, is it states increased residential land usage through infill, rehabilitation, and redevelopment, and housing densities and types appropriate to the character of existing neighborhoods. So this is a private redevelopment of a vacant space, and I think we're providing an appropriate density that fits within the character of the neighborhood.
One of the other proof requirements for use variance is the enhanced standard.
Correct.
And reconciliation, can you address that, please?
Sure. So I think we reconcile this, because the property, as you know, is in the C3A zone. But the need in New Brunswick for more office space, I don't think really exists. It's very low. Work with home, work from home is very common these days, and there's an overall decline in office space in the state and nationally. And I think that this business model is going to become permanent. So the Medici case, which is the one that requires that enhanced standard of proof, allows, or it specifically recognizes that a change in the community's needs is a way to reconcile. So I'm offering that up to the board. And I'm suggesting to you that this use variance can be granted because the property may not reasonably be used for its own purpose, and to alternatively providing a multifamily use, which is, in my opinion... use, which is, in my opinion, in more high demand than office and medical office.
Now, let's move on to the requested bulk variances.
Right, so, that's a refresher, that's the rear yard setback, the front yard setback on Fulton, and the building coverage. So, I think all three of those can be granted, because they will further the same useful land use law goals I just mentioned, and also your master plan goals. And then finally, that leaves the design standard for the parking width. And I believe that if you grant that, it was, you know, in order to fit those eighteen spaces, granting the eight feet instead of the normal nine allows us to ease the significance of the parking variance.
Do you see any issue with proving a negative criteria for these bulk variances?
No, the setbacks provide enough light, air, and open space, in my opinion. The building coverage does not go beyond what the lot is capable of accommodating, and there's no detriment to the public good and the benefits of the C-2 analysis, in my opinion, outweigh any detriment.
Outweigh or substantially outweigh?
Substantially outweigh.
As the statute requires?
That is correct.
Thank you. That concludes his direct testimony. He's available for questions, and specifically, if Mr. Bignell has any of his planning review comments that have not been fully and adequately addressed, we're certainly happy to elaborate.
Can I have a see what the elevation looks like in color? That's the one?
Yep.
That is a one.
Please provide some testimony on how it would blend into the neighborhood that's existing up there.
Trying to figure out who's best to do this. Since we don't have an architect.
After dragging this down there today, I think I saw a couple of structures that were this high, specifically, I'm trying to remember.
I'm talking about the colors.
Ah, the colors.
We can change the colors.
Well, I would leave it to the board.
Any member of the board?
I would, it was more about the building height, not about the colors, so I'm not sure. But, well, building height is, I know that that one, that lot's on a hill, you know, at least partially of the thing. So, if it's a four-story build, a building on top of a hill, it's going to be more, in terms of height difference between the other buildings. You know, when we reference the two-hundred Livingston lot as a, you know, comparison of how we should view this one, that had a school right at the doors, that was sort of close to it.
As a part of the site plan improvement, we're reducing, we're eliminating that hill. We're dropping everything so that there's no drop-off along the sidewalk. We're leveling that whole area, so there wouldn't be that four-foot additional.
Yeah, it could be quite a difference if it's on that one, it's four stories on top of that.
That's correct, so now, every, this building, grade-wise, will blend or in with the surrounding area.
Good question, hopefully good answer. Let's turn back to the color palette. The applicant doesn't have any particular preference, since Mr. Johnson was the one who designed it, and he was the one who designed two-hundred Livingston, I thought that he was being consistent. But certainly, if we're fortunate enough to get your approval tonight, we can make it subject to color change that's satisfactory to the staff.
Well, it's white primarily with gray, is that gray shading on the?
Yes, that's a gray shading.
Second, a two-story, and a little gray on the first floor, right?
Yeah, I mean, the whole point was, was to get several colors. But maybe you can see the gray a little bit more pronounced here, all right, and with the red accents. But like I said, we can, we can adjust the colors if that's the board's preference.
As long as the colors are consistent with everything else in the neighborhood.
That's a nearby, I'm assuming, what's your thought? You're the closest one.
Well, the existing building is a light brown.
Yeah.
Yeah, church building is a, is a regular brick color. So, I just wanted to just point, just point the setup at the colors. The one next to it's yellow, and then the one across the street has a darker, a lighter brick and a darker paint color. So, it's, it'll be different.
Yeah, as long as it's, you know, similar to the surrounding area, so it's not, you know, popping out like that.
We want it to blend and be consistent.
Yeah, so it's not, it looks fine, yeah.
It feels like the front on Livingston is more attractive than the Fulton front. Can we make the Fulton front look similarly attractive as the Livingston front?
We have some architectural interest as we go partially down Fulton with the change in, in the roof line here. Perhaps to change the roof line here is something you'd like us to explore?
Yeah, because it just looks like a box.
I understand.
Right, and if we're talking both our fronts and things like that, and we're talking a lot about the attractiveness, because everyone kept talking about the attractiveness, I think it needs to be attractive all around.
But are there shutters on the side? Because I can't.
No.
Well, maybe if you just, yeah, but, so maybe if you just put shutters on, on that side, it might change the whole, would dress it up and be a lot simpler than changing the whole dynamic of the, the building.
All right.
Something to break up.
All right, we'll break up the roof line, and we'll add some shutters, correct?
Shutters is not a problem.
Break up to me that one.
Oh.
You haven't been sworn in.
I'm sorry.
That's right, you're good with both.
Both.
Changing the roof line and the shutters.
That's what I was explaining, that we don't have a problem with the shutters, adding shutters to the side, but when it comes to the roof line on that side, it's very difficult. We can add crown molding to that area, and we will add shutters to the.
All right, Papi, yeah. Raise your right hand.
He can close.
We don't bite.
Okay, can you please state your names, tell your last name for the record?
Francisco Garcia, G-A-R-C-I-A.
Mr. Garcia, do you swear upon the oath of not admitting the truth?
I do.
Including all the statements you previously made when you were sitting there?
That's correct.
Our council, I believe the focus is on breaking up that one massive white part of the building, so it's not just a solid slab. I think to just visually change it would be sufficient, it doesn't have to be anything major structurally unusual.
I think what we'll do is, if it's, if we get your approval tonight, a condition would be to work with the staff to change that look, so it's broken up a bit.
And not like window treatments, corners, things right on the window tops, just still?
Window treatments and corners is.
It's still for yours, it's more cosmetic, it's not structural.
Yeah, 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 okay. That concludes our direct case. I reserve the right to make enclosive comments after we hear from the hall.
Any member of the board have any further questions to?
I know that there's only one entrance into the parking lot, correct?
Correct.
And I don't, as of right now, there's two ways into that parking lot. Why was there the decision to just have the one? Was that, was that because you felt that was better to swallow in and out, or is?
I think, I thought it was more because of keeping the aesthetic appeal of, for the corridor, for the Livingston Avenue corridor, not having a big garage door or wide opening. I, I think this looks much more attractive than if we would have put either a single or a second. It doesn't like me, I'm sorry. I just think this is much preferable from an aesthetic point of view than if we were to put it.
No, no, I understand, I just, I know that there's apartments right next door that, you know, use the whole street, so I was concerned about, you know, the flow of traffic and people coming by and things like that. You know, like, you know, families and kids like that, so.
You know, we, we didn't have a traffic expert, but I can tell you from my experience, your trip generation on something like this in the AM and PM is going to be like, maybe ten, you know, up over the course of a peak hour. So, you're not going to get a whole lot of traffic in and out here. For, for eighteen spaces.
There's a curb cut on Livingston Avenue that's going to be abandoned.
Curb.
There's a curb cut for.
Yes, that will, that will be abandoned, yeah. And, and I think with the bike lane there, I, I don't think we want a lot of turning movements in and out.
Where will that ancillary office stop?
Where will it be?
Where will it park?
Oh, where will it park? Probably on the street, to be, to be honest with you.
Anything else?
We want, we want to reserve the spaces for, for the tenants. And it's not an office that, that's going to be manned every single day. You know, we're talking about, you know, eight, seventeen units, so it's not going to require a full-time manning.
You've given up your resident permanent parking?
Yes, we are, yes, we are.
So, if they don't live there, they're going to get a ticket for parking there, is that correct?
Is there? I think, I think Livingston doesn't have any, you know, regulation on parking at that point, there might be like a two-hour turnover kind of thing, but.
Yeah, so, so we're okay there, chairman.
Can you mention the trip generation, you think about ten trips at peak?
At best. At best for eighteen spaces.
And I missed a garbage, was it going to be municipal or is it going to be private?
Private.
Sure, anybody else have any questions?
So, you're changing the fourth floor to three units now instead of five?
That is correct.
And the two outdoor rooftop spaces will still be there?
Yes, they will be.
Open, not enclosed?
Open.
Can you talk to me about the safety of an open outdoor roof access?
Ron?
We're talking about the delivery?
No, we're talking about the rooftop, the rooftop open spaces.
The rooftop open spaces? There's no, there's only access through the tenants, am I correct?
Yes, there's no access to those rooftops. They're open, but there's going to be no access.
No access.
No access to tenants.
No access, oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I saw where the breakdown of like bedrooms, I mean, the only thing I really see is for the parking spaces, the breakdown of bedrooms per unit.
Each one of the units is a two-bedroom.
Oh, okay. I, I saw that in the parking number of spaces, but I wasn't sure if that was just.
No, no, that's. That's exactly what you got.
Okay.
I just want to clarify something about the parking variance. Did we say, did your planner say proposing eighteen credit for required thirty-five or thirty-six?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-five.
Is it thirty-five? Let me, let me clarify.
Okay, I had a discussion with Mr. Bignell just recently. If you look at Mr. Bignell's report, it indicates that the requirement for parking for the office would be one space if the office was in permitted use, and two spaces if it was not in permitted use. And I indicated our position is, an office is of permitted use, so that the correct calculation is one space for the office, which gets us to thirty-five, not thirty-six.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. The office space is so small that we give it twenty-three or eighty square feet.
I just also want to clarify that on this eight-twenty-one document, it, for parking stall size, it says you're complying, but I think I heard you said you're looking for a variance for the.
We're looking for a design standard relief, okay? We're not nine by eighteen, but it's, it's a design standard.
And what's the size of the stalls again?
Eight by eighteen.
Eight by eighteen.
Eight by eighteen?
Instead of nine by eighteen.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you very much. We'll open it now to the public. Any member of the public like to come forward, have a comment? Mr. Cradville?
Could you please state your name, tell your last name for the record?
Charlie Cradville, C-R-A-D-V-I-L.
Do you swear upon the oath of not admitting the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
You're on, five minutes.
Good evening, board, Charlie Cradville. I just want to confirm this is not mixed use, because the office is a rental office?
That's correct, it's ancillary to the principal residential use.
Thank you. Can anyone tell me how long the property's been vacant?
Three months.
Newly vacant, okay. I understand, I understand the argument that was made, similar to two-hundred Livingston Avenue, and I was there for some of those hearings, but I guess I'm more interested in how it compares to the other similar properties, multifamily properties on Livingston closer to it, like the one in between Edgeworth and Wellington. Did the applicant look at that building or any of the other buildings that are closer in terms of, you know, how many units and, you know, how those developments worked out? Because for better or worse, two-hundred Livingston's not built yet.
The answer is, we did not look at any other properties. We thought the best example for comparative purposes was two-hundred Livingston.
Okay, and for the record, that's still, you know, construction hasn't begun yet, or is? Okay. How about for this project, is there a timeline for construction, when it might start and finish?
Yes, it'll be eighteen months from start to finish.
Okay, and if approved, you would expect to start soon?
Yes.
Any idea on the monthly rents, approximately what they would be?
Did you set the monthly rents, Mr. Garcia?
No, no, yes. And yeah, I guess, I'm, I'm sorry to hear Mr. Johnson is ill, but I, I guess I was surprised to hear that, you know, it's possible the board could proceed even without an architect testify, is that, that's the case?
Is this a question of like the legality of?
Yeah, I just, I've always, every time I've seen a building like this.
They don't have to testify.
Okay.
Pictures worth a thousand words.
Okay, well, be that as it may, I do think that, you know, the board had some good questions tonight, I, I think there's really no harm in, you know, holding off and asking for the architect to testify, and so, you know, with respect to everyone involved, I would ask that that be done, but that's all, thank you.
Okay, so, any other members of the public want us to speak on? Okay, seeing that, we'll close the public portion.
Mr. Chairman, just thirty seconds. I believe the testimony from our planner covers all the bases in terms of providing the necessary proofs for the use variance, the FAR, the parking, the bolts. As I just said, I'll repeat, pictures worth a thousand words, the staff. We've gone through four iterations of the architectures and the floor plans, so what I'm saying to you, although you're not bound by it, it's been incredibly vetted by your professionals, and I don't see the need for any further testimony, and we request an approval of the application, thank you.
Board discussion, any final thoughts or comments? Okay.
All right, so, should the board act favorably, following conditions shall apply to any board. Compliance with the terms of the city engineer report dated August 21st, 2024, submission of all necessary easements, and go across access agreements for review and approval by the board attorney and city engineer prior to filing the same, payment of site performance funded amount reviewed and approved by city engineer, submission of a site inspection, escrow deposit for city engineering inspection fees in amount calculated pursuant to Title sixteen point two, four point one six zero, wired sewer connection fees, payment of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Titles thirteen point oh-four and thirteen point oh-eight, issuance of a road opening apartment from the city event, city engineer required, compliance with the terms of the Bignell planning report dated August 18th, 2024, planning review escrow funded for all anticipated post-approved reviews, payment of any other fees due to the city of Brunswick related to development or use of this project, payment of all outstanding taxes and water sewer fees, no six-county planning board approval or waiver, the Anarchism Alpin Mission approval or waiver, freehold soil conservation district approval or waiver, submit engineering site plan to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos offered at the hearing, submit architectural plans to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing, execution of the Title Thirty-nine Parking Enforcement Agreement, payment of a parking, payment in lieu of parking, waiver of on-street parking permits, work with staff to approve Fulton frontage, and private hall for trash and recycling.
My report dated August 21st.
August 21st?
Yeah.
Wait, okay, so what I did was, I got them backwards. So, engineering report is dated August 18th, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then yours is August 21st. I apologize, thank you for the catch. All utilities and other site improvements to be maintained by the applicant, no show expense, all on-site utilities to be constructed underground, all temporary approachments into the public right of way shall. All temporary approachments into the public right-of-way shall require city council approval. All construction stations shall be done on-site unless an encroachment allowing into the public right-of-way is approved by city council. Streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris. The applicant shall cause the streets to be cleaned if directed to do so by the Director of Public Works. Tracking paths shall be installed at all construction exits. Replacement of damaged streets, curbs, and sidewalks as per direction city engineer. Schedule a pre-construction meeting with the city engineering department. For variances, we have a D variance for use, a D variance for FAR, a front yard setback variance, a rear yard setback variance, building coverage variance, parking variance, design waiver for parking stall dimensions, for landscaping, landscape planting requirement, and for parking lot landscaping. Anything that I missed?
Sounds good. Okay, I have a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Is that Kristen?
Yeah.
All right. All right, Latim Aminas?
Yes.
Karla Castaneda?
Yes.
Michael Valvin?
Yes.
Kristen Rich?
Yes.
Michael Toddlin?
Yes.
John Zinnerman?
Yes.
Senator Ryan March? Thank you.
All right, and the other matters of interest to the public?
Yeah, please, real quick. Charlie Cradville. I wanted to ask about an pending application and the scheduling of it. Is it, is it yours? True, there's a, a plan for further development at one hundred Bayard Street, and will that be coming to this board, and if so, when?
We have received an application for a project at one hundred Bayard Street. I don't think we've scheduled it for a zoning board meeting yet.
Okay.
So I would anticipate potentially this fall, the fourth quarter of this year, most likely.
And at this board, so?
Yes, it's a zoning board.
If I could just ask to be like notified or added to the list of people who are notified for that one, that is of interest to me. And you think you could do that for me?
It seems odd.
I'm going to keep your individual notice. I mean, the agendas are posted online, so it's easy enough to just click on the agenda.
I'll just keep an eye on it, I'll keep in touch, but, you know, figured if, if, if there's no problem with a notification, I would welcome it. But thank you for your time, have a good evening, everybody.
All right, can we move motion to adjourn? Take a motion. Second. All favor? I don't know, I'll close. Good night, everybody.
Take care, Charlie.